Please call the road.
Hoffman.
Here.
Lauren.
Here.
Swallow.
Here.
Adair.
Here.
Brooks.
Parsons.
Here.
Bowman.
Here.
All right, item four, discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at city council meetings will be approved by one vote at the council. Any member of the council desired to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda in place for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action of the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of regular meeting on June 17th, 2024. Item B, approval of the minutes of the special meeting on June 25th, 2024. Item C, approval of ASAP Energy invoice in the amount of $34,185. Item D, approval of claims in the amount of $237,169 and payroll expenses of $258,463.38. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Bowman and a second from Dr. Lauren to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Bowman.
Yes.
Lauren.
Yes.
Adair.
Yes.
Swallow.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
Item six, reports from staff. There was no planning commission meeting. Item B is the hospital authority meeting on June 25th. Mr. Bowman, you have a report for us.
Mr. Mayor, there's nothing to report as all business on the agenda was of a routine nature.
Any questions for Mr. Bowman? Thank you, sir. Item C is the library board meeting on July 8th, 2024. I don't have a council member on there and I need to get one on there. I think I mentioned it to you guys last week or last month about volunteers and you guys did not overwhelm me. But I'll make an appointment to that by our next meeting. Okay, what you got?
Nothing much, just a bunch of routine business. There weren't anything special. Summer reading furniture is actually going well. We've got a large increase of kids that are coming to summer reading for them last year. That permits a little. That's about it. That was how I like.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Ford? Thank you, sir. You can see in your packet the minutes from the arena authority meeting on July 2nd. Is there any? Do you have anything to share on that? Any questions from anybody on that that we can take to that authority? Item E is tourism tax commission meeting. There was not one. Was no board of adjustments meeting. The airport commission meeting. Steve, I'm going to have to ask you to report on that as well. So I missed that meeting.
Most of the routine business again. There's a, the only agenda item on there was to recommend the approval of, surplusing the old dab gas truck, which is an agenda item on here for us tonight. That was the major talking point at that meeting. It's short and sweet.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Ford? Thank you, sir. Next item is Parson Recreation Meeting, and that did not happen. Cemetery meeting on June 13th. Mr. Ford, were you at that?
I was not.
Okay.
Heather was, though.
Heather was. Heather, do you want to give a report? Are you prepared to give a report?
We didn't have a meeting. We didn't have to.
Form a report? Okay. Next item is the finance committee meeting on July 15th. Dr. Lauren?
Yep. We have three CDs coming up for bids. We're going to work with Trent to get that done. The general fund currently has collected 83% of what we've anticipated for the year and spent 89, almost 90%. So we're going to have to probably make some transfers from the utility authority and savings account to balance that out. The economic development funds collected 41% of what was anticipated for the year and spent 76, almost 77% for the year. As of June, we received $363,000 in sales tax and $58,000 in use tax for a total of $422,000, which is up 4 and 1/2% from June of last year and up 7% from May.
And that's about all I've done to report. Any questions for Dr. Lauren? Thank you, sir. City mayor's report. I don't really have anything to report this time. We happy to answer any questions if anybody has them. All right, business manager's report. Mr. Ford.
All right, so I gave everybody a copy of a business act report. I was requested by a council member to give a list of projects we had going and also gave some of their plans. Just see that the Forest Street asphalt is on there twice, so you can strike one of them. Otherwise, obviously, I think everybody knows the big gaping hole in Collegeville Ward. We got that concrete poured today. It will cure over the next couple of days and by Thursday we'll have that road open and up and running. We did put up one of the new high-speed low-drag radar traffic control systems, which replaces the pressure plate that we had to tear up. And so that's up and working really well. We think we can get ODOT or OMAG, one or two, to replace it, to reimburse it for that. Probably shouldn't be ODOT because when they do their work on that road, they're going to tear up the other pressure plate, which would cause them to have to buy the radar system anyway because the traffic bike people don't need pressure plates anymore. So we think we can get the reimburseers, but OMAG may do as well. So the elevator at the homestead went down yesterday. They're trying to find a motor to get back up and running. We think we should hear something about that by tomorrow, we hope. I bet you don't have any idea where one is right now. Both of our 11-yard trash trucks are back in service and running well, which is good. Locust Street is still on hold. We're going to try to find a contractor to perform the curb and gutter work for a reasonable price. We got one bid back that I felt was unreasonable, so reached out to Leving's Concrete Fairview. They've got all the specs from Myers, so we're just waiting to hear back from them. We tried to call them a couple of times today, but they were out of the office. Drake, keep trying to get ahold of them to find out how much they would charge us to do the curb and gutter. Then we think it'll take us roughly three days to lay the asphalt once we get the curb and gutter in. So, but I can't give you a solid timeline for completion because I don't have a contractor to do the curb and gutter yet. So once we get that figured out, that will lay out the time to get the asphalt done and get it completed. I'm going to have to put together the city manager's report, and I'm working on that format. I've got a number of good ideas. I'm going to try to get that outline put together and send to the mayor to let him review it and put some feedback on it probably next week. I appreciate the council members here providing their input, what they'd like to see in the report, so we'll certainly take that into consideration. Actually, all I've got is a few questions.
On Locust Street, I know at one time we had a curb machine that was not oper- like it did not work any longer. Do we still have that machine and do we have any idea what it costs to repair it?
The cost to repair it, not, so mostly it's hydraulics that need replacement, but there are also some, they call them servos, the side wheel, the control and the leveling that thing. And right now we're investing, but not those things even exist anymore.
Okay.
It's that old. We may not just be able to do it because we can't find the parts.
Could we look into what it would take, you know, surplus it and maybe come to council with what a comparable replacement would be? I mean, I'm sure it's probably pretty.
We're looking into it. Well, we're actually looking into it as trying to lease one.
Okay.
But it turns out that what we figured out is most of the companies like Leving's Concrete, they don't own the curb machines either. They lease them.
Okay.
So that's why we can't find one to lease because they're all leased out right now to companies doing curb and projects. So we're looking at all of our offices to do that, to try to be able to do that ourselves. Right now, we don't have the ability to, so that's why we're going out there, trying to find somebody to come to it for us.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Ford?
If he could just have, if possible, at the next meeting, kind of an idea what one of those would cost, just so we can.
Sure.
Know and whenever that bid comes in, have the idea of if there's, would be significant cost savings of buying one and doing it ourselves. I mean, I know it's the first project, obviously, it wouldn't be, but just to have the piece of equipment for future projects.
I'd like to just get our own to work and be honest with you.
Oh, that would be ideal.
Be cheaper than anything else. So, like, so we're looking into it to figure out if we can find those servos. They like, we're not convinced they exist, but we're asking around to try to find them.
So, I appreciate that. And I appreciate you putting this together, definitely.
Any other questions for Steve? All right, thank you. Item seven is remarks and inquiries by citizens. If anybody would like to address the council, we'll give you two minutes. If you please identify yourself and let us know what you have to say. All right, well, we're glad everybody's here. Item eight is presentation from Retail Attractions. Brent Kissling is, has been brought up speed on what we're trying to accomplish for economic development, retail development, and he has joined us this evening to represent Retail Attractions and kind of give us a presentation. Brent, floor's yours.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members. It's great to be back in Alva today. For those of you who don't know, I grew up in Burlington, so I'm local here. Parents still live over there. My brother has moved back to take over the farm. I got my very first ticket on Oklahoma Boulevard and been to the Rialto a thousand times growing up and grew up on Taco Village, has built the man that I am today. And I want to start just by saying, first of all, thank you for being aggressive as a community and even looking at doing something like this. I know that you've talked to some other firms as well and I've known Jeremy for a long time and worked in economic development with him. And as somebody from this area, I love seeing that our community is continuing to try to grow and find ways to grow. I've been working in economic development since 2001 and I've found that there's three things that a community has to do in order to grow. You have to have a strong education system, and normally that's passing bond issues and have good facilities and that kind of thing. You have to have health care in some form. You've got to have an ability to at least wrap people up and send them somewhere, but you've got to have health care to take care of people. And the third thing is you've got to have places for people to hang out and buy stuff. That's how we grow population, which grows into workforce, which grows our community. So just the fact that you're even looking at that is great. I am from Burlington, Burlington High School graduate, and I've worked out of college for Senator Inhofe for a while. I worked for, as the state director for USDA Rural Development. And then after I finished that term, then I served as economic development director in ENID for about 10 years. And that's when we really ramped up the Northwest Alliance, trying to get everybody in Northwest Oklahoma speaking with one voice. And then whenever Governor Stick got elected, he appointed me as the director of commerce and I'd stepped down last June. I have the notoriety of being the longest-serving director of commerce in state history. They tend to run us off pretty quick in that position and I enjoyed that four and a half years. Learned a lot. But whenever I stepped down, I approached a gentleman named Ricky Hayes, who started Retail Attractions, and asked him about forming a joint venture. And so today he and I have a joint venture. I'll be taking ownership here in about three, four years of Retail Attractions, but he's been doing it since 2007. He started this company headquartered out of Owasso. There's really three, maybe four companies that do this and there are firms that do this in this part of the country. I think you guys have probably met most of those. Ricky's smaller. We're smaller than most of the others. We focus a little bit more rural than some of the others, but we've worked in 500 communities. We've worked in 39 different states. And we believe that we're very fleet of foot whenever it comes to working economic development projects and retail. And the main reason why I wanted to jump into this game was because of what I just told you. I think more of our communities need to be focused on retail than what they had before. And there's one thing that I've learned in economic development, Jeremy can probably tell you this too, you've got to be specialized. You've got to know what you're going after if you're going to be successful in economic development. In Oklahoma, we got really fired up on wind energy 20 years ago and now look at it. We've been really fired up about aerospace and now look at it's one of our largest industries. So as a community, as an economy, you've got to focus on something and retail has become such an important part of it. I wanted to make sure that more of our communities in Oklahoma were doing it. Here's what we do, and I hope, I'm seeing the handouts there, we've created a proposal for you to look at as well as a draft contract for you to consider, but here's the Cliff's Notes on how we operate at Retail Attractions. First of all, we start with everything being very data-driven. We have several different subscriptions to data services. Place your AI is probably the most popular one, but Regis and Sites USA and several of those help us to collect information about a city, but also about the drive times and commuting patterns of those that are in the community. And I've just taken a quick cursory look at some of the things here in Alva. Of course, our 2020 census was 5,008 people. The estimate today has actually gone down to 4,953 people. That's down from the 2010 census of 5,100 people, but within the 30-mile drive time, you've got almost 7,500 people here in Alva. And your demographics are driven by the 15 to 24-year-olds, a lot of that because of Northwestern Oklahoma State University. Household income is through the roof. $94,000 is something that gets a lot of people's attention for an average household income. Only 43% of the people in your drive area are married. I thought that seemed a little bit, a little bit different to me. You own 1.9 vehicles per household. 10-minute commutes is the average here in this area, but it's that type of information that we want to pull about the community and be able to tell that story to others. Now, one thing that we don't do upfront, and you're welcome to ask me the question, but I will not have a good answer for you tonight, is, okay, so which retailers are you going to bring in? Which ones are the top of the list? And you can look at a gap analysis. You can look at the data and say, X retailer should be here, but that's not the way that we do it. We prefer to look at the data and then sit down with the leadership in the community and see what does the community want? What are you desiring? What gap do you believe is there? And then try to attack it and bring them in. And nowadays, especially in rural Oklahoma, it's not so much about going after a retailer as it is going after a developer that's going to maybe do a couple of different things. It might be mixed youth housing and retail. It might be something with a commercial space as well with retail. And so finding those types of partners that are a good fit for this area is what we would like to work with you in order to try to chase after. We don't have our own real estate brokerage team. We work with local brokers in order to broker the deals. That, it's really good politically for us, but it's also good because those folks know the details behind the properties more than anything else. That's worked really well for us over the last 20 years. We also like to work with the existing retailers that are here, you know, making sure that Sonic remains, making sure Pizza Hut remains here, that that would family continues to have a presence here in the community. Having those types of interactions are important, especially in rural Oklahoma. You don't want to wake up and read in the paper that I saw the signs on Radio Shack over here as I was driving by. You don't, you don't want to see those types of things. And sometimes if you can find out early in a process that there's an issue, maybe you can, maybe you can deal with that issue. I know whenever I was doing economic development in ENID, we had a moment that we thought we were losing staples. And we put together a whole process and package to keep them there in that community and they've been a huge sales tax generator for ENID over time. So working with those existing ones and not just the national chains either. I actually talked to Commissioner Parsons on the phone prior to this meeting and I told him, I said, I would not want to bring in something that would eliminate Taco Village because that is a mainstay of my family forever, making sure the Bull continues to do well here in this community. So we'd want to work with those existing retailers as well. And if there's some renovation that they're needing, some supply chain issue or something like that, we'd like to play a role with it. Love working with entrepreneurs in the community as well and helping to put together a package if they're needing a financing package or something, we'd like to work on that. But then we also, like everybody else, would represent the community of Alva at the big shows. The organization where deals are done is called the International Council Shopping Centers, ICSC. They have a massive event in Dallas for this region and then they have the big international show that happens in Vegas every year. And we'd be meeting with developers and retailers on your behalf, too. And then also, just talking about Mr. Ford's report, we do a monthly report as well of those that we've interacted with. All of you would receive that and that way you could see what we've done on your behalf. In closing, and I intentionally didn't want to talk for a long time today, but I'd love to answer any of your questions. Probably the biggest question you're going to get as elected officials are why? Why would we invest public dollars in trying to do something like this? Why do we even care whether the community grows? Why do we care if businesses are coming in? Well, I already mentioned retail is a big part of workforce development and population growth, but on Saturday of this week, I helped my son and his new wife move into their new house out in Woodward. They had a rental house in Moreland. They now bought a house in Woodward. We're so fortunate to have our son, new daughter-in-law and our daughter and new son-in-law. We have, they both got married three weeks apart, which is not ideal last fall, I'll tell you, but we've got them both here in Oklahoma because Oklahoma had the opportunities for them to stay here. That's why we do economic development, so that each of our kids and our grandkids have an opportunity to stay right here in Northwest Oklahoma or Alva, so we don't have to fly off somewhere to spoil grandkids someday. That's why we do it. And with that, that concludes my presentation. Does anybody have any questions? I'd love to try to answer any that I can.
Can you give us some, what you would consider success stories in towns our size?
Yes. Again, Joe and I talked about this the other day, and he asked me, which was a really good question. He said, how many communities the size of 5,000 people have you worked with? And I told him, I said, not very many because there's not too many communities the size of 5,000 people that are even trying to get into this game. Most of them are on defibrillator watch and not even worried about the next level. But in our area, we're working in Ponca City right now. That is specifically about some things around movie theaters and entertainment, which is not something that would be of interest here in this area, but working on that right now. Weatherford is one of them from this area as well. We have Paul's Valley that has had a number of, of course, they're right there along I-35 and so you have the Casey's that comes in, the Casey's General Stores. You have the Brahms and the Wendy's, the Wendy's in Broken Bow. There's a full-blown development along Highway 69 there in Muskogee that we've been working through prior as well, a couple of the restaurants that have moved into that area. We've also done some work over in Arkansas and I would not compare yourselves to any of that because every one of the communities is going to be searching for something different. You know, down in Broken Bow, right now, the Wendy's that just opened up down there, there was like a line all the way around the block for that particular project and that's unspecific for them. They've got a brand-new $350 million resort that's being built just down the road and Wendy's wanted to be there. And McAllister, we worked on the new Chick-fil-A that just opened up and I'll tell you, it's a monster project for them, but every community is going to be just a little bit different. In ENID, again, a much different population level, but I think this is instructive on the way retail works sometimes. In a community of 50,000 like ENID, you pretty much have all the retail that should be in a town of 50,000. And even for a town of 5,000 like Alva, you've got most of the retail that should be here. But there are instances where you have to do some kind of public-private partnership in order to bring in that next level, to prove that you can draw 9,000 people or 10,000 people to your community. And in ENID, ours was Academy Sports. They should not be in a town of 50,000 people. They should be in a town of 100,000 people. We're one of the smallest, that's one of the smallest communities that Academy is in. We did an incentive to bring them in, a pretty robust one, but it's killed, it's done fantastic. And because of that, Texas Roadhouse comes to town. Five Guys Burgers was there for a while. McAllister's down there. We didn't have to incentivize any of that because we had the market verifier. For a community of this size, it might be a Brahms. It might be, you know, something like that, that's going to be that next level, that market verifier that we need to go after in order to push the retail a little bit, a little bit higher up. Other questions?
So based on what you said about Academy, you don't think today's one is a good story to thrive in Alva?
Oh, it's good.
It's not one that'd be a good.
Probably not Academy, no. Definitely not Academy, but there are others that are out there. And I will say that the reason why I don't like to promise on these things is some of those, I mean, like Hibbett Sports or something, which also exists in ENID, but it's in smaller markets, who knows whether they'll be around in six months? I mean, who knew Red Lobster was going to go bankrupt? I mean, there's JCPenney, some of those, that rotates so quickly and that's what's interesting about this world. That's why it's so important to have somebody in that game like Ricky, my business partner, who knows all of those regional people because it seems like they rotate about every six to eight months. And so staying in there with the, you know, with the Casey's guys and the Brahms guys and all these guys, there's always, always a rotating, rotating door on the retailers. Anything knows them all.
What would you consider, and I know you say you're not, you don't have, you know, people necessarily go out after, but what's, I mean, what is the, you said Brahms, but what is the next level for a community that has a trade area of 7,500? Because I think, I mean, for our current trade area, I feel like we have, like you said, a lot of the national brands. What is kind of, what are those businesses that are going into this town with 5,000 people that you've seen? I mean, are, besides, like you said Brahms, are there any others that you're familiar with?
There would. I mean, you see, you see Casey's making some investments in smaller communities right now. Well, and then you, and then you see the Five Below's and that kind of thing, which is not something that I would necessarily be pushing for this market, but they're building a lot of those stores right now. Dollar Tree, you know, just bought Family Dollar and so they're closing a whole bunch of those and so you see Dollar General coming in behind them. But that's not the type of thing I would envision for Alva because when I look at Northwest Oklahoma, I see ENID as the monster kind of in this area, but the feeder from that should be Alva and Woodward and probably, you know, maybe Fairview down in that area. That's, you should be one of those regional hubs that should pull out of Winoka. With the new resort going into Winoka, this should be their landing space here in Alva. You should, we should be pulling more from Southern Kansas. And whenever you start looking at it that way, you know, who knows? Who knows what it could be? It could be something that you never even thought of before. The Vegas show this year, that was the most fascinating thing to me. There's tens of thousands of people at this show and they have one huge building that's full of developers and one huge building that's full of retailers. And you'll walk through the retailer one and you'll have Marriott and Hilton and Annie Anne's Pretzels and Wendy's and McDonald's, but about half of it this year was brand-new retailers that are looking to move into this area of the United States. And I'd love to see them in Alva. I think that's a big, with a college town like this, it's a good place for some of those new ones.
And the reason I ask that question is, to me, I mean, it's about sales tax collections. Yes, it's important, but you know, quality of life is equally as important. And say, you know, we make this investment, if we're going to, if it's going to bring us to Dollar General and a Casey's Truck Stop, to me, that does nothing for our quality of life in Alva. And it's going to do very little, I think, for sales tax collections because the Dollar General is going to take away from the businesses that are here and same thing with the Casey's. So I just, you know, if we have a good target that's going to be a new kind of, a new thing for our citizens and also where it increases the tax collections, I mean, I can see it being a good thing, but I just don't know really if there's a whole lot of people that are in the national retail space that are investing in communities of 5,000 people with 7,500 trade area. From research I've done, it just seems like it's extremely uncommon.
Well, and you've got huge deficits in clothing, men and women's clothing here. A lot of Northwest Oklahoma has that. Have it kind of like, you and I talked about the other day, there are, there are regional folks as well that can fill that gap. That's, that's not JCPenney's, Dillard's, Kohl's, that kind of thing, but other people that have a store maybe close to Alva that we could convince them to open a satellite here. I will tell you this, to your point, every community should have gates that they would go, I call them gates, that you'd go through before you would ever consider incentivizing retail or even pushing to try to bring them in. My three gates that I've always had and that every project I bring you would have to go through, through these gates before I would even present them to you. One, it's going to have to be a net benefit to the, to the community. So if you're going to write a check to them, their check to you in sales taxes will need to be bigger, including the cannibalization of other retailers there in the community. That's one. The second thing is that it has to fill a gap. So if you're already way over average on tractor parts and, or if you were sporting equipment or something like that, then, then. or something like that, then, then there's, I wouldn't want to bring that to you either. But then the third thing, and this is where it gets kind of interesting, is can you bring something in that's going to increase your trade area to take you from 7,412 people within 30 miles to push it out to the 50-mile trade area to get a larger percentage of those folks to come in? You know, it's good in a local retail community or economy to have some of the national brands as well as some of the locals because the national brands are always advertising. You're not going to be sitting at the Super Bowl and see an ad for Taco Village on your, on your screen if you're setting out of Winoka. But you might see one for, for one of the other retailers that are out there, other restaurant brands. So it's important to have a mix of that so you can increase that trade area to bring people in. But that's, that's the way I would answer that. We'd want to figure out what those gates are. For me, it's those three that are the most important.
You guys also, you mentioned like Ponca, Weatherford, Enid, they all have an El Patio, for example, Mexican restaurant. You work, you work with those types of people?
We have.
Reach out to those types of places as well and trying to get kind of local businesses that are in a few towns to come?
Yep.
And I think that's going to be our, what we need because those businesses are going to be more involved in the community. And I think that that's the type of business that I think is more likely to invest in our community is the one that maybe they have free locations of surrounding towns.
Yeah, and that's one in particular that's been very active lately. And even some of the quick Asian foods, the Panda Express type. There have been several of those popping up recently as well.
You mentioned working with entrepreneurs. Can you kind of maybe enlighten us a little bit on how that work goes for you?
Yeah, and I don't know whether you guys have an incubator tied in with the college or the career tech or anything like that here. But, but I love, my passion is putting together financing packages. I absolutely love doing that, trying to fill a capital gap on something. And helping an entrepreneur to figure out, oh, do we need to do an SBA 504 on this? Do we, do we need to do a 7A? Could we work, could we use some of the micro loans from rural enterprises? But Rural Enterprises Incorporated or some of the smaller USDA loans? That's where I love, love to help out. I'm not a cook. I'm not going to help them figure out their menu. Or their clothing choices because I pretty much buy everything from Atwood's.
So besides you and Mr. Hayes, who's the team that would be supporting Alva? I mean, what's your team look like?
Great question. And that's something that differentiates us a little bit too because he handles the retail side. I normally work more with the communities. We have one guy that handles all of our research and data analysis. We have another firm that assists us on the marketing side. And then we have one other that just does some of the administrative work. So we're a, we're a thin, lean team and that's how we can be responsive and help out quickly.
So if we decide to go with you guys, tell me what, what happens month one? We sign, we make our first payment. What, what is your ramp up, what's your month one that you're going to do?
Yep, the first thing that we do is run the, run the data analysis. And then Ricky and I both would come out here and meet either an open session with you. Normally what happens is you want us to meet with some of the community leadership as well, whoever that might be here. Some, a lot of times it's commercial real estate agents. But one of the first things, we want to identify our sites that could be available. And it doesn't necessarily have to be for sale, but at least identifying sites where something could be raised or something could be purchased so that we know what our universe is. And then we also take that data and start working with each of you on, okay, what kinds of things should we chase? Whenever you guys are out, it's a baseball game or drinking coffee somewhere. What are people asking about? What do you, what do people wish that they had? And then we can match that up with the data to see. And then we start making phone calls. And I would anticipate fairly quickly, we would have some developer at least start, some of the developers start coming to town and at least get a feel for the community because I don't know that a lot of them have been here, at least not in the last couple of years. Not the ones we've been working with. There's very few rural developers in this part of the United States that we work with all alone.
And then what is the average amount of time that your communities, does it take working with you to see a return on investment of that money?
Another great question. We, we have, what Ricky has always said is there's, there's never been a community that's worked with us for three years or longer that hasn't gotten something that's been of worth, that made the investment of retail attractions a net benefit to the, to the community. We've had, we've had a couple of ones recently that within three or four months, we already had LOI, letters of intent signed and the process is moving. We would not want to promise that ever. Normally it takes a little while to build relationships and bring some people in. I think in this particular case with Alva, a lot of our early time is going to be spent developing the narrative and figuring out what story we tell. You know, pulling some numbers from Northwestern and finding out student populations and some of those desires that might be, I think that's our biggest selling point here. That and the regional draw a part of it. But yeah, it's different for every community. I, Jeremy can, Jeremy can. If you've ever worked in an economic development project, they tend to take a while. And getting from conversation to yes and from yes to an LOI, LOI to a contract and from a contract to breaking ground and from breaking ground to ribbon cutting, that's, that's where it tests the patience of those of us in leadership. Because we get asked, as soon as, as soon as you announce XYZ is coming to town, everybody assumes it's going to be open next week. And that doesn't always happen that way.
How quickly would you be able to start if I ordered a contract?
Soon as we can. I can start tonight. Yep, I, I'm an hour away. And my deal is, and you've seen the contract and we would, I would love to work with you. And I would make sure that we're successful in this partnership. I don't want Yvonne to write something in the, in the newsgram about me being unsuccessful. I want to make sure that this would be a passion project for me, more so than any other client that we have out there.
Question, this 750 per, for, per community visit, I mean, is that a one-day visit? I mean, if you're coming down here for a, a meeting, to our meeting, I mean, I, I'm sure you're, you're reasonable. But I mean, that's, that's something that's kind of drawn a concern in mind. Is that 750? I mean, if you're coming down here and staying a few days and, you know, I understand it, but what, kind of explain that a little bit more to me.
Yeah, and that's a, that's a maximum that we put in the contract. Just to be honest with you, there are, there are some communities that will just absolutely wear you out and want you there all the time and that's great. But, but there is an expense that goes along with that. Every time that is utilized, it's pre-approved by whoever you designate. Normally it's the city manager. But yeah, that's a maximum amount. For me, it's like 10 bucks to drive here and back.
You mentioned you're in 39 different states, you have small.
We were, we were. We're not now. Great, we're Oklahoma, Oklahoma, Kansas, Arkansas and Texas right now.
That was, my question is what your availability is if you're so spread out with small teams?
Yep. No, we're, we have about 25 or 30 communities that we work with today. I think that's going to grow here over the next couple of years, but I don't anticipate us being more than 50 just because we like having that personal approach. Some of our, some of the other firms that do great work also, they may have a dozen or 15 different folks out there and that's great if it works for them. But for us, we want to have that personal relationship with the owners of the company.
I'm going to ask Jeremy, the Woods County Economic Development, Economic Development Director. Jeremy, are there any questions that council members have neglected to ask that we might want to hear from Mr. Kissling?
Well, let's talk the software. As we know, one thing that I bring up quite a bit, for example, Placer AI. When you talk to them, $18,000 on annual basis. Having access to the particular type of software is just great. Is that something that, for example, they come across and then they need some information from the car show that takes place and want that information? Is that something you're able to pull for them, get reports to? So instead of us paying $18,000, it's part of the package that you have there?
Yeah, yeah. If you're not familiar with Placer AI, it is, it's probably the scariest software on the planet Earth because it's, it's tracking all of your cell phone data. And so the fact that we have that subscription, you would have access to that. Yes, we can pull reports. We have, our data guy pulls those reports very quickly. But we can pull from your Walmart how far people are coming. We can, we can see how this Walmart compares with other Walmarts in the state. You can see all the zip codes that it's coming from. It, it just tracks information, but it has really good tracking information for the national brands. So your McDonald's will have good, but it probably won't have good information like from Atwood's and that kind of, since that's a little bit more regional. But you can put geofencing around different events that you have here and you can see how far people came. And it's, I mean, it's, it's served to you in the aggregate. But yeah, it's, it's 18, 20,000. It goes up about 10% every year for the cost of that subscription. But you would have access to that through us.
The only other question I would have is, as you know, retailers, when they're looking, they're, they're not going to make a phone call first. They're going to check the website and see how that, do you help in that development area?
We don't really help with your web, like website design and that kind of thing. We don't do that. But what we, what we do have, if you go to retailattractions.com, you can see all of the communities that we're working with and those that we've worked with the last couple of years. And there's a bunch of them on there. And we can provide you, and if you click on each one of them, if you click on Enid, then you get to pull up all of the publicly facing data about that community, the demographics and all of that. And what we do is we provide that to communities in a widget form where you can put that on your City of Alva website or the Woods County Economic Development website. And I know in Enid, whenever I had a, we just had one, one tab where it said interested in retail in Enid. And whenever you clicked on that, it actually went to Retail Attractions immediately so that, so that I didn't have to keep that kind of information updated. We, we get a data dump. Some of them is two times a year. There's some of our data that updates four times a year. But as soon as we get it, we update the site and then you don't have to worry about it. You're, you're already widgeted.
One, your contract renewable. What did you experience for increases for the whole years?
We don't typically do an increase. I know, I probably shouldn't say this in a public meeting, but the Enid contract that I negotiated in 2010 is still the same as it was then. They've still got the same, same terms on that. Price of subscriptions has gone up and so that may be a consideration we have to look at in the future. But it's not something we're going to get you with. Well, we might make a proposal at some point. It'd be up to you whether you want to increase it or not. And one thing I failed to mention, and it's, it's just written kind of in small print in the contract, is that, I hope this comes across correctly. I am the former Director of Commerce in Oklahoma. And so I got to work on projects all around the state, not just retail projects, but manufacturing projects. In fact, on Wednesday, I'll be flying to London, working on some aerospace stuff on behalf of some other clients. I mean, it's, there's always other things like that. I would love is just to be a part of the team here in Alva. And you know, with the Bralyard project or Arena or something like that, there's some value that I can add. I'd love to help out. Again, this is a passion project for me up here in housing. We've actually got a couple of our retail clients that were working on some housing projects right now, connected them to some, some housing developers. So sometimes it's more than just retail in order to make something happen. Like I say, a lot of our rural projects anymore are not just bring in a Wendy's. You, it's somebody that wants to buy 20 acres and they're going to carve off three acres for this and four acres for this. And then they're going to put some multifamily by kind or something like that. That's, that's where things are moving nowadays.
Do you work, you know, talking about industry, do you work to bring in? Is that something you do like beyond, you know, restaurants and clothing stores? Do you like create jobs, like manufacturing jobs, things like that? Do you work?
Probably not actively marketing your industrial parks. I'm just saying that when Jeremy's got a project, I'd love to help him if there's a way that, that we can help, putting together state incentives or something like that. Jeremy and I have worked together before.
Well, Brett, we did appreciate the time, putting together the proposal for us and then your time with us this evening and the other time you spent in our community, obviously. As I'm pretty sure I mentioned to you, we are looking at, you know, your competitors. I do, for council members, I do have plans to get at least one more presentation in front of the council. And you know, the timeframe on that is probably by next council meeting. I don't know if we'll schedule a special or if we'll wait till the regular. It'll depend on how everybody's calendars, you know, line up. But it's something that I do think that we don't want to sit on for very long. But you know, we, you know, this is new territory for us and we want to make sure that we're weighing all our options and making the, you know, ultimately the best decision for the people of our community now and into the future. But Brent, thank you for meeting with us this evening. And we'll ensure that there's my political answer. We'll be in touch.
You can all be asked to be here. Thank you all very much.
Next item. Discussion and action to enter into agreement with the Woods County, Woods County for E-911 dispatching and administrative call services for one year from July 1st, 2024 to June 30th, 2025, with some total of $30,000 to be paid in monthly installments of $2,500 and to allow the city business manager and or mayor to sign all necessary documents. Is this the same as what we've approved in years past?
Same, Brett.
This is a standard agreement that renews every year. If there are any questions or discussion, I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to enter into an agreement with the county of Woods County for E-911 dispatching and administrative call services for one year from July, 1st of July, 2024 to 30th of June, 2025, with a total sum of $30,000 to be paid in monthly installments of $2,500 and to allow the city business manager and or mayor to sign all necessary documents.
Have a motion from Dr. Laura, second from Mr. Bowman, to enter into agreement with Woods County for E-911 dispatching and administrative call services for $30,000 a year, pay monthly $2,500 and to allow the manager and mayor and or mayor to sign all necessary documents as stated in the agenda, item number nine. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Laura?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Adair?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Item 10, discussion and action to declare a surplus and authorize the sale of one City of Alva Regional Airport, 1989 Ford F-600 Abgas Truck and to authorize the manager and mayor to sign all paperwork and transact the sale. This is what Steve was mentioning. Airport got a new Abgas truck. And so this would allow us to liquidate the old one.
I would. I would move to. Authorize the sale of the. Declare a surplus, the 1989 Ford F-600 Abgas truck and to authorize the city business manager and mayor to sign all the paperwork necessary for the transaction of a sale. of a sale.
Have a motion from Mr. Adair, and a second from Mr. Hoffman, I think. To authorize the sale and declaration of surplus of the Abgas truck at the airport as stated in the agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Adair?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Lahr?
Yes.
Item 11, discussion and action to, on the appointment of city representatives to negotiate on the city's behalf for the fiscal year 2425 IAFF Local 3782 Union Contract. I would like to recommend that we retain Mr. Bowman and Sadie Beer as our negotiators on behalf of the city, just for continuity and continue the conversations that they've already been having with their firefighter union.
I motion to reappoint Mr. Bowman and Mrs. Beer to represent the city on the negotiations with the firefighter union for FY 2024, 2025.
Have a motion from Mr. Parsons and a second from Dr. Lahr to appoint Greg Bowman and Sadie Beer as city's representatives to negotiate on the city's behalf for the 2425 firefighter union contract. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Parsons?
Yes.
Lahr?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Adair?
Yes.
Item 12 is new business, we do not have anything that meets the requirements for new business. 13, remarks and inquiries by council members.
I have something, I'd like to give a big thank you to the folks of the city, who I think helped the Niskatoga Golf Tournament by taking the bug sprayer out there and spraying it. I heard nothing but good things, and I think it's a good deal.
Yeah, I, just again, I'd like to thank all of our employees for everything they do, you know, every day in this awful heat, keeping our city running, and all the guys and ladies that are working for us to keep us running. I always just like to say my thanks to them, and thank you to Mr. Ford for preparing this report. I sent him an email, and he was actually on vacation, I didn't realize, and he got back to me timely and got it done, and I appreciate you taking the time to do that, definitely.
Thank you all. City Council is adjourned, and we will call to order the regular meeting of the Alva Utility Authority. Please call the roll.
Hoffman?
Here.
Swallow?
Here.
Brooks?
Bowman?
Here.
Lahr?
Here.
Adair?
Here.
Parsons?
Here.
All right. Item three, discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at ADA meetings will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda, it will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of June 17th, 2024. Item B, approval of claims in the amount of $282,578.40 and payroll expenses of $69,499.78.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Have a motion from Mr. Bowman, you guys must be on my bad hearing side, is it Lahr or Hoffman? And Dr. Lahr, to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Bowman?
Yes.
Lahr?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Adair?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Item five is discussion and action to approve the change request, one deduction to the FAP Wellfield Telemetry Project for $78,970. To be clear, this is, as it states in the agenda, a deduction. It was part of the bid that was duplicate from other work that we were gonna have done locally, and so that, and what we're having done locally won't cost us near what they're deducting, so if I understand correctly, so, okay. So I would, discussion, if there is no discussion, I entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the change request, one deduction to the FAP Wellfield Telemetry Project for $78,970.
I got it that time. Have a motion from Mr. Bowman, a second from Dr. Lahr, to approve change order request, one deduction to the FAP Wellfield Telemetry Project for $78,970. Is there any further discussion? I will say that $78,970 that can go into more waterline replacements in our community, so. Any further discussion? Please call the votes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Lahr?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Adair?
Yes.
We do not have anything that meets the requirements for new business, and we will adjourn the utility authority meeting. Now, call to order the regular Alva Economic Development Authority meeting. Please call the roll.
Hoffman?
Here.
Lahr?
Here.
Swallow?
Here.
Adair?
Here.
Brooks?
Parsons? Here.
Bowman?
Here.
Item three is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at ADA meetings will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda, it will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of June 17th, 2024, and item B, approval of claims in the amount of $323,299.60 and payroll expenses of $21,982.88. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Get the north side going right there. Have a motion from Mr. Hoffman, a second from Dr. Lahr, to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Lahr?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Adair?
Yes.
All right. Item five is new business, we do not have any new business. Item six is adjourned.